Let us signify of the United States of America and as you're a republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we begin, I'd like to welcome Senate President Thomas Alexander to our meeting tonight. Thank you, sir, for being here. Okay, right here, motion we approve tonight's agenda.
I'll make the motion, approve agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All right. There was a voice that... I said already he's over, okay. Welcome, Mr. Leonard. Do I have a motion we approve the minutes?
Somebody.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I thought we were gonna have to call an exorcist for a minute. Okay, let's open the session to a public comment. If anyone has a public comment, please come forward, state your name, and tell us what you live. Any public comments? Okay, no public comments, and we will close the public comment session. Next, we will have reading of resolutions. We have two here. And I'll tell you, forty years ago, the president of the State Senate was sitting behind one of these council seats. He was a Wahala City Councilman, and it started here. And we're... And I've known Senator Alexander for pretty much all my adult life, and call him friend, and call him friend, I'm pleased to do that. And I'll tell you, that's part of the magic that you've done, because everybody in this county, in your district, can say the same. And I just thank you for your service. Forty years is a long time. Josh, you and Sarah E. may be the only two that got forty years left in you that...
I don't know.
I'd like to read a resolution to honor Senator Alexander for his forty years of service. Whereas Senator Thomas Alexander has exemplified unwavering dedication and tireless commitment to the people of South Carolina and the citizens of Wahala throughout his four decades of service in the South Carolina Senate. And whereas Senator Alexander has continuously demonstrated exceptional leadership and steadfast advocacy on behalf of his constituents, contributing significantly to the betterment of the state of South Carolina. And whereas Senator Alexander has served with integrity, honor, and distinction, earning the respect and admiration of colleagues, constituents, and communities across the state. And whereas Senator Alexander has played a pivotal role in shaping legislation and policies that have positively impacted the lives of countless South Carolinians and citizens within the city of Wahala, addressing critical issues such as education, healthcare, economic development, and environmental conservation. And whereas Senator Alexander's tenure as President of the Senate has been marked by his exceptional leadership, fairness, and unwavering commitment to upholding the principles of democracy and representing the best interest of all South Carolinians. And whereas Senator Alexander's legacy of service will continue to inspire future generations of public servants to strive for excellence and to always prioritize the well-being of the people they serve. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the City Council of the City of Wahala hereby express their deepest gratitude and heartfelt appreciation to Senator Thomas Alexander for his forty years of dedicated and exemplary service in the South Carolina Senate and for his outstanding leadership as President of the Senate. Do I have a motion?
Somebody.
Make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
There any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Senator Alexander, thank you for your service, and I'm just... It all began here, we're really proud of you. I know you already had a public comment, so I'm gonna say a few words.
Of course.
I know y'all got work to do, but that's very kind of y'all to do the resolution and the words touch my heart. Way too much there, quite y'all. But let me just say, it's all about what you... Is serving the people. Making the... Trying to make a difference and other things better for those that we serve and community throughout the state of South Carolina. The Lord has blessed me, the people have been so good to me. Any success I have belongs to the people that allow me to serve and to work for you, and it's a great honor and privilege to do the work. But as you said, it started a while of City Council, but actually, at that time, the... It would be using the, I guess where the municipal court is now, in the back room there, we didn't have the nice cap... We had a conference table, and we sat around the conference table, and we did the people's business of Wahala. And I know the sacrifices and the dedication y'all making today for the future of Wahala, and I think you each of you want what you do, what you mean is honor and privilege to work and to be here and be a part of this. And I'll touch my heart for this resolution, it means so much. But the grace of God, the Lord has allowed me to serve, and with His help and the people's help, I look forward to continuing to serve as long as He and y'all will be to serve in the Senate of South Carolina. So, thank you so much for taking time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. And Thomas, thank you. Thomas, can we get a picture?
Sure.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but...
I'm just gonna look at the middle again.
We're all standing together. I just took a bunch.
Thank y'all, thank y'all again, appreciate it. God bless y'all, thank y'all for the work that y'all are doing.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim. Thank you.
I think we're gonna be right back out here in a minute.
Should we stand here for the resolution?
That's fine, this is actually, I prefer this. We have another resolution. This is a resolution to recognize Kami Roach for her achievements in basketball. And I'll say, we tried to hit Kami here a couple of times before, but she was too busy achieving. I tell you, I admire, I've read so much about you, and I just really, really appreciate your skills and... I wish I'd have had them when I was in high school, so... All I could do was make me a line in my own football team, they figured out that it was just hitting me. I read this is a resolution to recognize Kami Roach for her achievements in basketball. Whereas Kami Roach, a dedicated member of Wahala High School varsity basketball team, has exhibited outstanding skills, leadership, and sportsmanship throughout her sophomore year. Whereas Kami Roach's remarkable performance has earned her the esteemed title of Western 3A Region Player of the Year, a testament to her exceptional talent and hard work on the court. Whereas Kami Roach's exemplary skills and dedication have garnered her recognition at the state level, as evidenced by her selection for all state honors for the second consecutive year, further solidifying her status as one of the top basketball players in the state. Whereas Kami Roach has demonstrated exceptional leadership qualities, serving as a role model of inspiration to her teammates both on and off the court. Whereas Kami Roach exemplifies exceptional sportsmanship and dedication to the sport of basketball. Whereas Kami Roach's contributions to the Wahala High School varsity basketball team have been instrumental in fostering a culture of excellence and teamwork within the program. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Wahala, that the Wahala City Council extends its heartfelt congratulations to Kami Roach for her outstanding achievements and contributions to the varsity basketball team.
Keep smiling, just keep smiling.
Great.
Congratulations.
I saw y'all get that card, I'm like, that's Marsha.
That's happening. That was already a public comment, I was gonna say the same one.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Just for the formality of it, we need a motion in one second.
I'll make the motion to accept that resolution.
All discussion, all those in favor, please signify by the phone.
Aye.
All right, we'll move on to the administrator's report. Ms. Myers.
Thank you, sir. Just a few updates of this past month. We did welcome some new personnel in the fire department, police department, and water crew. The restrooms for Stomp House Mountain Park, the Ross Mountain entrance side, those were installed last Friday. The signage is ordered and should be installed before June 30th, before the end of this week, so we're excited about that. The Wonderway Greenway construction is complete, the punch list is being addressed right now, and a ribbon cutting is scheduled through June 1st. We had several different events in the month of April, or this first couple of days of May. It's a queenous last ride on the 20th, the race of Wahala on the May 4th, and it's not really our inaugural, we've done some in the past, but this one's a little more formalized. Community cleanup day, April 27th, in conjunction with our recreation department's Super Saturday for baseball, softball, and T-ball. Represented what was on hand that day to throw up the first pitch, so that was a fun time as well. And then Super Saturday for the inaugural season of black football was on... Actually, that was not May 4th, that is incorrect. It was this past weekend. Economic Development, we met with five prospective business owners last month, three of which are interested in the downtown area, bringing in a new food truck. We do have a new hair salon on South Broad at the Edge, a new food truck opened, and we have a boutique kitchen store that is planned. And then we had another developer come in, still very preliminary stages, but the possibility of three different subdivisions were discussed. One of them, they've only been seven units, one they have been up to just one or so. We'll see how that goes, I'll keep you apprised of it. We did prioritize sidewalks repairs after awarding the bid last month. Work should commence over the next few weeks, we hope. Mosquito spraying will begin in June. Anyone who knows if anyone with honeybees, please make sure you fill out that form on the... With the city so we know not to go in the spray. Our Streets and Sanitations Department's been hard at work, some beat patient efforts in mulching, planting, pruning, et cetera. And then I do wanna recognize several of our departments, including fire, police, water, streets, and sanitation, all four going out and helping clear the downtown trees. We had some heavy winds on April 11th, and then we had the storm come in May 8th. We were very grateful that they worked as a team and all come together to take care of those issues. And then, our... We did start with the testing and flushing in the month of August. We are continuing to seek and apply for grant opportunities when we find them. Three were submitted since the last time we met. Those included General Government, Public Safety, and Water Infrastructure. And then we are continuing to work with local partners and local budget that we'll talk about in just a few minutes. If you have any questions about those in particular, I'll do my best to answer them.
Is that it? Does anyone have any questions from Ms. Myers over the administrator's? All right, let's move on to the second and final reading of Ordinance 2024-10, an ordinance to amend the City of Wahala 2023-2024 budget, Appendix A, general fund fees, and other matters related. Ms. Myers, if you wanna refresh us on that before we have the public here?
Yes, sir. Last Tuesday, we had the joint committee and council meeting. This one was moved to second reading. Just really quickly, the registration fees for youth recreation is not being adjusted, but the uniform portion of that fee is being adjusted to kind of reflect what it actually costs the city for the uniforms. It is for outside instead of city, it's now eighty, for inside instead of... Any numbers in that?
I don't know. Which we can talk about in just a second.
Instead of... It's twenty-five to forty-five.
Twenty-five to forty-five in city, seventy to eighty outside of the city. This is to account for uniform costs.
For the uniforms, yes.
Okay, let's open the public hearing on this. Does anyone have any comments? Anyone have any comments to make on this ordinance? Only once, not twice, we close the public comment session.
Accept Ordinance 2024-10 amendments.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
First reading of Ordinance 2024-11, an ordinance to raise revenue and adopt a budget for general water, sewer, and hospitality funds herein under the City of Wahala budget for fiscal year July 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2025, and other matters related there to... Ms. Myers, do you wanna touch on the highlights for us?
I can, yes, sir. The first few pages you see are just financial policies. And then starting on the actual third page of the document, this is just an overview. I know that it looks like this is a steep increase from last year to this year as far as our budget. Please note that seven... Five point seven million is in special revenue funds, so that includes our hospitality fund, appropriation for the community center, as well as the USC funds account. General fund is looking at approximately just shy of five point eight million. Enterprise just shy of five point six million, for a total of seventeen million, eighty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty for what budget. This does include a three percent increase across the board, five percent longevity, and a handful of adjustments that showed to be significantly less than the statewide average, will still continue with the wage and comp study as soon as this is completed, as we promised earlier. The operating accounts for police, fire, and water crew all increased. We do have in this built-in a three percent wire crew, which was requested in our workshops. It does include the prioritized capital, permanent capital maintenance items from a couple of months ago, the council designated. Those total four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty. This does include a six percent mileage increase. This does include an increase to the base rate of sewer and the water. For sewer, five dollars inside, ten dollars outside of city limits. And then for water, we originally had two dollars, we're now looking at three to make sure that we have the funds to cover that three plus increase, and to make sure we hit our debt service ratio for our bond.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. To accept 2024-11, the first reading. Second?
A motion and a second, is there any discussion? Let's start with Mr. Holliday.
I'm good right now. Still trying to increase revenue and decrease expenditures.
Mr. King?
I had a couple things regarding sanitation. It was brought to my attention. Right now, we don't have any money set up, set apart for roll carts and dumpsters, and we will be out... We're... If anyone wants a dumpster right now, two are set aside currently for the Waffle House, but we don't have a dumpster to give anyone for dumpsters, and roll carts will be out before this takes place. So, I would like to see an amendment.
We had an order this year, this coming up this year.
Yeah, but there's no money set aside for it. And so, I would like to... There was fifty thousand put in the... It was in the fund for that, and then the money for the garbage truck got put in that same light item. Then that money was taken out, and it was moved to another light item, and it wasn't approved. So, where we are right now is we... We're... We're gonna be stuck. Most of the new dumps, most of the new roll carts, and like I said, the dumpsters are for new customers. And we're adding a lot of customers. And so, that's a money-making endeavor for us. So, I just suggest that put the fifty thousand back in that, so you can get the dumpsters and roll carts as needed.
Ms. Myers, do we have anything in there at all? It sounds like we have a... This is kind of...
There is currently, there's currently five. The last couple of years, and it is correct that that one went down, the last couple of years, we've looked at twenty-six, twenty-seven, that's longer than you, we sent on fourteen. I don't know that we need a full fifty, but we'll certainly look at putting some in, and with a revised number from the fleet management system, we should have plans that we can divert to that light item if you wish.
This is first from the top, I don't think we can discuss the detailed...
Let's add it. I'd like to make a motion to add fifty thousand's what he had in there for it from before. I'd like to make a motion, add fifty thousand back into the sanitation budget to cover these things.
Why don't we ask Ms. Myers to come over the number that we'll cover it with?
Okay, so, so I make a motion, and how would you like me to frame it?
Just move that she incorporate in the funding necessary to purchase new containers and roll carts.
Okay, that's my motion.
And I'll second it. Any discussion on the amendment?
I'd just like to make note that, as she mentioned, and we'll get into that later in this budget discussion on the enterprise fleet management deal, there's... Will be a little money left over from what we initially budgeted, and as we see that come in, we can redirect it where some cuts were made. And that'd be one of them.
Okay. Any more discussion on the amendment? All right, those in favor of Mr. King's amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then I have another amendment. The... Russ had made a grant, he asked for a grant for a year and a half. You know, grants take a long time coming through. So, his grant was for mosquito sprayer and mosquito spray. Normally, we spend about seven thousand dollars a year, a little less, for mosquito spray. Well, since we got the grant, we didn't need the mosquito spray, you know, this year we got a new sprayer and whatnot. But we're gonna need that back in next year's budget, because we need the chemicals to spray for mosquitoes if we wanna continue spraying for mosquitoes. So, that's...
Ms. Myers? Could you also look into that also? Ms. Myers?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to, I'd like this year's budget to get that.
Yeah, let's make sure we have that in the budget for next year.
Would you like me to make a motion on that one as well? Would I need to?
I would.
No, no, let's don't forget it for second reading, though, 'cause I think she's...
Go ahead and read.
Okay, okay. And then, I'm sorry, thanks, I've been trying to do my due diligence, and as well for the building over there, there is... They don't have in the shop any functioning heaters at the moment. They had, the pyramid came in, they said, there are these things, cannot be fitted.
It's building?
In the shop, in the shop. And so, if come this winter, if those men are gonna work with heat, we need new heaters.
Ms. Myers, has this been raised before?
It is, it has been. We do have money in the building maintenance, and also we have the streets facilities, we're gonna have to look at it as well.
We've got money for heaters.
Depending on the quote.
Nine thousand is what's looking for shop, hanging heaters.
They can't work without the... Can you get back to us on that also, please?
And now, we're gonna find out about the, I guess, vehicles coming up, what we've... What's come on here. This thing just came in today, didn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, 'cause I can't find, I picked this up today. This was new since then.
Well, myself and Chief Ross have been working on it and looking at the fleet, and he got this back.
No, I'm appreciative that it came in and we have it. But so, this was something new, because we have... I don't know if it'll affect this, maybe, Tim, you know that, the transmission in their F-150, the 2011 F-150, is that one of the vehicles then that would be getting swapped out in this lease?
It looks like they have more than one F-150, so I'm not sure.
Two thousand and eleven?
They don't... There's not an eleven listed here. There's a two thousand and twelve, for public works.
Maybe that's the one we're talking about.
It's on this sheet, if it hadn't been listed by department, which ones are up for replacement?
Oh, okay, so if it's not on this sheet, then it's not up for replacement. It wouldn't be replacing, that would...
It's got the year that the replacement has been recommended, that's beside...
Yeah, I don't, I don't see it there, so it's probably not up for replacement. And then, I'll let you guys look for that. While you're looking for that, then one other thing, the leaf truck has had an impeller go out, was it, was past year, was it just past year? Or even this year, when they spent, you know, eight thousand dollars, I think fixing the impeller on the leaf truck. Wow, so that's been fixed and that's done. But what has to happen with the leaf truck every year, it has to have, it's like a new lining, a new impeller?
I think it's like a Teflon lining in there. The problem is that people supposed to put piles of leaves and then piles of brush. And if a two-by-four gets thrown in that pile of leaves, it sucks it up and it damages it.
And it ruins the line.
It, it damages the liner, it damages the impeller. And some of it's been operational error. That's been great. But we got to get our, our residents to make sure when they rake their leaves out in the season that.
Right.
Because them guys can't see what's in the pile.
That's right.
That's where the damage.
And that's.
Most of the damage comes from that incident.
And you can imagine, that's a tough thing, that they're all going to get it. So it's not that he's lucky, that he says, hey, we need a, a new impeller every time. The same though is that we need a new liner one season, after one season it has, the liner shot. And if we continue on using this leaf truck, we have to do that maintenance on it every year.
Was this included in his budget request?
Uh, the apartment repairs, there is forty thousand and that, uh, six months was at twenty thousand five hundred and forty. It was higher the last couple of years, however, this is the partnerment that was split between streets and facilities and sanitation. So we believe we could go below that, um, it was fifty-seven thousand last year. So we did have the reduction in that, but we felt the forty should cover them.
Okay, that, that would include a replacement?
Any, any type of vehicle part.
The liner, or the impeller.
He just felt, he, he felt that there wasn't the money for that to fix that. That's why.
Well, that's assuming fair, I, I don't know that.
Well, what he's saying, what he's saying is we got, they got this month, this much between these two facilities. And, and knowing the cost, he goes, there's not money there for that specific thing.
Will you check on that, Ms. Myers?
Absolutely.
That's, that's another essential thing for operations. And the F-150 is due, the one I see for the police department is due for replacement in twenty twenty-seven, according to this.
Well, this, uh, the one he's talking about, I think, is in twenty twelve, maybe.
I found it on the list, it'll be replaced this year if this is incorporated.
This one is sitting up there at the Mother Cole and it's pretty much inoperable.
It's the transmission on it. So, but it's be replaced, so there we go. Okay, that's, that's all I have, well, that's all I have for that.
Okay.
You know, now, you want to let someone else, so you don't have to keep listening to me talk about other things and then you can come back?
Let, let, let's move around here, let's move around.
Go to that side and then, cause I can answer the questions that might come up.
Okay, excellent.
I don't have anything at the current.
Mr. Jones?
I got one question. The missing on his sale of capital, six hundred and eighty thousand dollars, what are we selling?
Property.
Okay.
And surplus.
That's all I got.
And that's a good question, I'm, I'm going to get to that during my comments too, because that's, that's a very important point that we need to take a look at in a second. Mr. Face?
Okay.
So you, I hope you everyone's looked this over, because it's been a while back and forth. I know Ms. Myers has been up, probably by the time I'm drinking coffee, still working on this some time. But the numbers are balanced and these are real numbers. We, we asked for that. And, and it's really close to being what the numbers are actually going to cost us during the year. So I feel real good about these balanced numbers. Part of that is cutting an apartment, I'm going to tell it, we're cutting community development. Parks and Rec is taking, is moving a physician out, that physician's going over to facilities. John Crew will be handling all the grass cutting going forward.
Even on the ball?
Yes, yes. Yeah, he is grounds and facilities and he's going to take that on. Let's see what else. You mentioned the, the water crew. There is another dollar added to that base rate on water as to cover our debt ratio on the bonds. And it, because every time we go up on a raise, it hits that. So we've got to make that extra dollar adjustment to cover our bonds. And it also includes our fleet management through enterprise. Chief Ross and I have worked on this, he's worked on it a lot. I went and inventoried the fleet and then he and I sat down and came up with a better list that, that is a big reduction from the beginning, but it also enables us to go into their maintenance program to where the new vehicles that come in will be serviced and we just pay a monthly premium. It lets us, the vehicles that we currently own, we'll roll those into that program so we can monitor it. And it helps our, our accounting, Ashley will have one check to write instead of ten or fifteen. And so I'm going to let Chief Ross give all the details, he can answer questions because he asked all the questions and we'll go from there.
And I believe you guys had a presentation from Chris Whiteside from Enterprise a few weeks back, and I was not here for that. The documents at that particular time, over a ten-year period, the average annual cost of that was about two hundred and thirty-three thousand. Mr. Pace and I looked at the vehicles that we currently had, what needed to be replaced. We had some that were being either underutilized or really didn't need to be replaced. One example would be the bucket truck with facilities, uh, that they're using for streets. They just did some repairs on that. That truck would have been replaced just on age alone, even though it didn't really need to be replaced right now. So with that, we moved some of those out and the numbers that came in this morning, the original was two forty-three and that's been reduced to one fifty-three. So about a hundred thousand dollars annually that was cut out of that by shifting around some vehicles. In twenty twenty-four, we will be looking at receiving eleven new vehicles to replace outdated like the truck at Public Works that's broken, the four police cars that we have that are unreliable. Fire department will receive two in that, police would get four, Public Works would have one, facilities would receive one, water would receive two. And there's one additional in there that's not been identified, whether it would be replaced or not, it's currently on the list, but the department that has it thinks they may want to keep that one. So it may reduce cost even a little bit more by taking that one out. In twenty twenty-five, there's only two that would be replaced, both of those would go water, twenty twenty-six would be three, and then twenty twenty-seven, we would be at twelve. And then after that, and after about the first five years, everything that we currently have will have been replaced by new vehicles in, in this rotation. With the maintenance being included in that, we should see a huge reduction in maintenance costs that we're spending. So the average, I think, was about forty-three dollars a month is what I looked at, that premium that we pay for maintenance. We take the car to the shop, they repair it, and that's it. We don't receive the bill for that, we pay the forty-three dollars. So if we have an expensive repair, we're not holding the bag for that large amount of money by paying that. That also covers our regular routine maintenance, oil changes, tire rotations, all those things are included in that as well. The way that this also works out, it streamlines the vehicles that we don't put in the rotation, fire trucks, sanitation trucks, things that enterprise doesn't particularly replace in their rotation, would go into the management side of that, that we can see what we spend on maintenance, what we spend on fuel, and it will consolidate all of that down. So each department currently is using somewhat different software to track that. Sometimes in the past, the city's had a mechanic and then we didn't. From looking at this, that reduces the amount of software we have, the maintenance should improve and we're going to be able to track that. If we have a vehicle that is causing a lot of problems, enterprise will move that up in priority. So once it becomes expensive, then that car may move out sooner than anticipated. If we have one that's extremely reliable that we wanted to keep, we can move that down. There's a lot of flexibility with that from what I understood. So the updated numbers that you guys have, the packet, I think it's on page four of the new packet, is, shows at the very bottom of that page, there's a category on the right-hand side called underutilized. Those are the ones that Mr. Pace and I looked at and had them to shuffle out. So they're still showing on the list, but they're not in the replacement rotation. So there's no additional cost, even though those are added, uh, still on the list.
So Chief Ross, automobiles go to the street. So.
It's not going, as I said.
As far as making, as far as making.
The vehicles will go to an outside shop.
Okay.
So we currently, that is our current program. Some things are done in-house, but most of it is outsourced currently.
And plus, even, even with the monthly premium on that, in the long run, it saves us money because we're, we're cutting that position out of a mechanic. So, you know, we'll just pay these guys to take care of our service work. The heavy equipment will go to the dealer or one of the kind of all the places down there.
Yeah, I think worth note too, is the original, over ten years, in the original proposal by enterprise, they had estimated that the city would save about two hundred and ninety-three thousand by switching to this. After we made the revisions and sent it in, our ten-year savings are one point one four six million. So quite a bit of difference in there. So I think the city would see an increase, and that is including the maintenance that is figured into, that is calculated into that figure.
Was there a guarantee on turnaround for maintenance, you know, if it goes in the shop? I, I don't ever see anything.
There was not.
No, that's hard to do sometimes.
We can, we have the ability to choose the shop of our choosing, they don't force us to go to a particular shop. We try to use businesses that are in the city, but the turnaround has been quicker that way than unless it goes back to the dealer, if it's a warranty repair. So I think we would see in, like in the police department's case, we're outsourcing all of our work already, we would continue to use the same shop, I think our turnaround time would be essentially the same.
And plus you, and on this list, there's, there's several vehicles that, just like the police department, for example, that we're keeping and they'll be spares and if there is some long downtime, they, at least they've got vehicles to use. Other departments, the same thing, we're keeping, everybody will have a flexible vehicle to fill in where.
So enterprise would pay like while I'm tired versus us paying, okay?
Correct. It's a, it's in, on the things that they, on our older vehicles, we have the option of running it through them at no, there's no markup, it's just a pass through cost. So if it's a hundred dollars worth of work that's done, it would go through our enterprise account so that we could track it for maintenance purposes to see where we're at and for costs. But there's no added fee from enterprise due to, they don't mark up any of the services, it's just a direct pass through.
They, they have the advantage of volume discounts, whereas we have to work in a smaller environment, they're still making money, they're good for it, but they have the advantage of volume discounts, being able to pull a lot together.
I don't know if you guys have or not, but there's also another chart where they've estimated our, the value of the vehicles that we currently have. They, they've been, said they were very conservative in that, they didn't want to overestimate that and then underdeliver. So there may be some additional savings for us when, when our vehicles that we currently own are sold, those vehicles may bring more than, than what's been estimated on that sheet. I think Mr. Pace and I identified some that we have that are essentially worth very little that are still good to keep around for a spare for specialized uses. So it don't really cost a lot of money to continue to have them, but we didn't gain anything by selling them either.
Is that this fleet equity analysis?
Yes, sir. So that, that equity is just based off of the representative enterprise that they used the black book wholesale value for that. And I know on some of the ones on the individual inside of the list from, some of those we know are going to probably sell for quite a bit more than the black book, and there may be some that sell under. So I think they've been conservative in this first year with eleven going out. If those eleven.
Oh, even the new thing is? Oh, you already got it, you already got it.
I mean, the, the numbers aren't in there, but the, the packet is in there.
The two fifty.
The two fifty, that's what I was talking about. We have some excess money to readjust some other lives.
I got one more question. As far as that, American recovery plan, we will have seven fifty in twenty-five, twenty-six. Seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, did I read that right?
Or?
Whatever. The American recovery plan, let's say, let's say it's seven.
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred, yes.
Now, how much are we using of that to balance this?
Uh, three fifty would go to water for their capital and infrastructure and then in adjustments and sense of how expensive everything is now and so probably needs to recover. And then three fifty, so you help with the capital purchases.
So basically, we're using that to buy capital quickly.
Okay, so, you know, like my question the other day about, you know, the matching grant from Skip Fund, so we're using that to cover some of it, but we don't have it all to cover a huge amount of expenses.
Yeah, one, one, you're hitting on what I wanted to raise also, and I think it's really important. I want, I want you all to go ahead and ask these questions because I want to kind of put a shampoo on this too. Does anybody have any?
The only other question that I had about the properties was, was there particular properties that were accounted for that you're adding up for the amount to balance the budget or was it just any of the properties that?
The water plant primarily.
Yeah.
Those acres out there on the water?
Yeah.
Primarily that.
How much, but how much was that valued, I mean, not that property, but I'm saying like, how much of property selling did we put up? We say somewhere around six hundred or something?
Six twenty-five?
Yeah.
Between some surplus that we have, some additional vehicles that are not going to go into this state management, some equipment that maybe for scrap.
Okay.
It's not just property.
Okay. There was just a couple of properties I had in mind that I was, yeah, I kind of like to verify, we came between now and the next week, the one properties we're thinking that we might sell that may be good for us to go ahead and sell was the whole water plant for sure. Yeah, okay.
Does anybody have any more questions on the, the vehicle package? I mean, you know, if you have concerns or questions, let's talk about it because this, this is, I think this is a good, a good path. And it, it ensures, you know, down the road that our, all our departments have fresh vehicles and they'll be maintained and it takes the burden off. You know, I mean, only thing the city will be looking at is the heavy equipment, like fire trucks and trash trucks. It even includes road package. If there are breakdowns on the road, it includes towing.
Yeah, that's another thing, we don't always think about that, but if one city vehicle breaks down, we have to pay added tow.
Yeah.
Under this, they cover that, they will send someone to pick it up and that cost is, since COVID and like everything else has gone up, it's, it costs us about two hundred and fifty dollars running out of tow car, even if that just in town.
I mean, if it breaks down right here, it'll cost us that to carry it to the, up county.
Good work.
In fact, I, gotta, if everybody's asked, I've got a couple of questions.
Well, I want to make one more public comment on this, so everybody.
Are we still talking on this?
That's what I'm talking about right there.
Yeah, because I still want to talk about.
So everybody else knows, I've asked Chief Ross to manage this. If, you know, going forward, without this program, he has the software and the knowledge on how it works to keep up with it. So under Ms. Myers' advisement, he will, he will be taking this on. And he has agreed to it. Because somebody has to keep up with, with the record and he has the software already, he does it with his fleet. So I've asked him and I want him to be aware of that.
Do we have to make a motion to adopt this plan?
No.
We don't have to care.
It's, it's in this plan, so when we vote as a whole, unless somebody amends something on this particular, it will be in there like this. I think that's all I have, unless there's other questions, or Mr. Mayor?
Well, I, I want to, first thing I want to do is, is I want, I want to express sincere gratitude to Ms. Myers, Ms. Well, I, I want to, first thing I want to do is, is I want, I want to express sincere gratitude to Ms. Myers, Ms. Johnson, and Mr. Pace for the hard work that they have done on this. And I'll tell you what, I, they've, you guys have spent untold hours on this and it's really appreciated. You look, Chief Rice, thank you. This was a, this is a really critical budget for us. First thing I want to ask, out of the seventeen million budget that we have, there's about five million that, that is included in grants, correct?
The community center appropriation or in the general. The five million for the community center appropriation is included in my guess.
Okay. So, next year, we're going to have to find around twelve million dollars to run Wahaala approximately. And that's something to, to note. You'll note we've asked for, that we're looking at a mileage increase, six percent. And this hasn't been done since two thousand and one, as I've said several times. It's a dollar seventy-six today by what I thought about in two thousand and one. And we've lost ground in terms of our ability to run the city from those revenues. The other thing that you've heard is it's going to be a three, we're suggesting a three-dollar base rate increase on water to fund another water crew because we've kept the same amount of people for a number of years and our water process has expanded. And we have to provide the citizens with good service and make sure that it's adequate. But thi- this strikes more to the, to the core of what we're looking at when we look at this year's budget. My first time with a deep dive in Wahaala's budget. I know Mr. Pace and Ms. Myers did the heavy lifting on this. Our revenue targets last year really did, in a lot of categories, in the budget process that we budgeted on. The revenue targets were, we did not meet those targets. The expense targets in last year's budget, we exceeded those, stopping in many areas and significant areas. So, we, we looked at, and that's why our emphasis on having a realistic budget, or, and I'm sure that they meant to be realistic last year. That's why we intended on double checking, triple checking in the numbers this year to make sure this budget was reflective. Second thing that Wahaala is facing is that last year, in order to run the city, we had to use, in to run the city, I mean also to buy capital equipment. That's important to make capital improvements, that's important for running the city. We had to use ARPA funds. And, and stop me if I'm, I'm mischaracterizing anything, please. You're much more experienced than I am. But this year, we're also looking to use in ARPA funds and selling fixed property. Now, that's not tenable. We can't continue like that and we know that, we're aware of that. That's like selling your car to pay the mortgage. You've got two cars, you sell one one year and next year you've got one you sell. What are you going to do next year? You don't have anything to sell to pay your mortgage. We have to make sure that our revenues and expenses equal. This is a critical time for us. We think we're on the way there. This is, we're not going to be in the habit of selling, of balancing our budget with fixed, non-renewable assets. Revenues and, and income have to, have to match. So, that's where we are. We've got a way forward. We believe that next year, we won't be facing that. This year we are. And so, we're in a position where we have to continue to provide good services to the citizens of Wahaala, take care of the needs of our, of our employees and our citizens, and at the same time, make sure we have a balanced budget. And that's what I wanted to say on this. I, I have faith that next year is going to be better. We're going to grow. We've got revenue basis that are going to increase. And it, we've already, Ms. Myers has already been looking at projections for next year. So, as part of this budget process, realistic projections and it's, it's looks good. So.
That's what I've got to say, is thank you all for the hard work you've done so far. And Mr. King wants, yes, sir. You'll have a couple of things. Everybody, yes, sir. The seventy-five, seventy-five thousand or seventy thousand, we have set aside for the tourism director, PRT director. Is it, what is it, seventy, seventy-five? I forget.
It's, we have budgeted properly set ready. We may not use all of the, to make sure that we have.
No. We had talked about this earlier and, and I said, well, is this just for, we're getting a person? And she said, well, maybe it's not just a person, maybe it's consulting, maybe it's, but we can use that money if we have it budgeted. And I just wanted, are we agreeable to do that if instead of necessarily a person to run the department, remember I was talking about, and I've got this fellow that, let me check with him and see if we can find someone willing to do some consulting? You know, a world-class operator kind of thing like that? Are we open to that? Are we open to using some of that money if it comes down to it necessarily not in a figurehead to run that department, but in using that money to get somebody, a mover and shaker, that can market this town and Stump House specifically?
Yeah, I think there are two things. One, there were two positions we'd initially discussed. One was economic development and planning combined, which is where we had to cut, which is where we would have a need, but maybe that could also include marketing, Stump House for economic development. The second one was the PRT director. And a lot of our plans right now, we have recreation department. We don't have a overall park recreation and tourism director. And in order to fit in with our plans with certain, we have, we have, as, as all of you have mentioned many times, where a true asset is Stump House. And we need someone to oversee our parks, our recreation and tourism, as well as market, but it's more than just that. It's someone that can actually bring together those things and make those dreams, desires come true for Stump House. So, that's going to take a full-time PRT director. But economic development, we cut that position because we just, we just can't find it. And that goes on Ms. Myers along with her little duties. And that is where we should, we should all be looking if, if there's a way forward in that area for someone to help us with economic development downtown, not just downtown, but the entire. We're twenty-eighth corridor, a whole city area. That, that's where we really, it's a lot on you. We've talked about working with some of the county groups. Oh, Ms. Melendez, I am so sorry. I forgot you over there. I'm going to stop talking right now and I'm going to let you, let her, let her.
Finish the grants discussion. Unless you want.
Well, maybe she's adding to that.
No, she, she won't say adding to this. I know where we left off.
No worries. Just wanted to make sure my colleagues and staff member were aware. I know Mr. King was speaking, so just want to acknowledge, if you, Mr. King, if you want to finish wrapping up, I wanted to make some, ask some questions, but ask some clarity before I do. Just want to make sure colleagues are virtually attending and the audio is perfect. I can't see you, but I can see the staff members and the audience, so that's, that's fine. I can pause right now. I know that was in the middle of somebody having a, you know, speaking.
All right. I just didn't want you to feel left out, Sarai.
Yeah, thank you, Sarai. Just let me finish this one point. So, if we find that hypothetical mover and shaker, and, you know, of course, we all have to be in agreement on this. Do we have any money set aside where we can offer a consultant that we think, wow, this person right here is what we need? Do we have any money set aside? It doesn't seem we do because we don't have it. But that money set aside for a director, are we open to the fact that perhaps, you know, Parks, Rec and Tourism, well, Bree's already holding up the, the rec. So, let her be the director over it all with the, with the idea that this guy would give us the, the direction, be worth it to give the direction to really handle the tourism as well as the community development. I know this is a, is a big hypothetical thing, but may not be as hypothetical as we think.
So, you know, we had mentioned that there might be some other areas that we're coming in a little bit high and have a little bit of extra. And I know it sounds like there's already some places for that money. I don't think there's anything wrong with maybe allocating some of those funds too, depending on how much there are, towards having something like that. I think in hiring someone at seventy, seventy-five thousand or whatever the case is, to be the director of Parks, Rec and Tourism is they would have to have experience with, you know, parks, rec and tourism already. It wouldn't, most likely it wouldn't be somebody's first time job doing that or they've worked their way through the system. I mean, we'd be looking for honestly somebody outside of our system to, to, that has experience working with also the Parks and Tourism portion of that. So, in that is that department director would be the one that would come for the, the meetings, the committee meetings when we have them and stuff like that. And also, they would have to have some sort of experience. Like you said, on, you know, maybe not the same experience that you're talking about in terms of consulting, but to some level of knowledge, experience that they've worked somewhere else and were able to do in a lot of ways what we're hoping that someone that can consult us to do. So, some of that may be one of the same if we got the right director.
Ms. Melendez?
I actually face the crowd.
Hello, everyone. Thank you again for the adjustments here. Greetings. I am in a six-hour difference finishing up some academic scholar opportunities that I received. So, I sing you my warmest greetings and it's currently one oh two AM where I'm located, so. But I wanted to chime in on this comments because I'm hearing what councilmember Grant King is saying. And if, if this is something, just a recap that I'm trying to do, I'm listening to all of this conversation, is Mr. King is referencing about funding being allocated to, to go to this he or she economic development consulting slash hiring person, right? But if we go back to reimagining where our economic development is, and this is where I'm going to hear what Josh, my councilmember, is saying, is, you know, how does someone that has the experience, the expertise, right? But if we go back to our current resources, like the staff members, I think we have and we do have someone actively in that position that I don't want to, that I want to ensure that we are remembering that it's our city administrator. So, the current city administrator does have some job duties and as we know, economic development is in that realm. In the past four years that I've been on council, it has been my experience that because of the dynamics of our current budget and our population, our true economic development director department with that position requires obviously high level of funding, right? So, I think if we go back to the current resources, the staff members that are already in place, I think economic development is going to continue in the conversation of how are we going to reimagine that? But we're deferring back to the current staff members that are already playing that role, right? So, Mayor, you may, you know, cut me if I'm saying something that is probably not relevant. But what I'm going back to is economic development, yes, it's a very, very, very fancy word. And I won't say fancy because it comes with money, right? It's a, you want to make sure you pay the right amount and also track the, the right person to do that role. But I think essentially we are doing that with the current staff member and the city administrator being our point of contact, with constantly, you know, being in that bridge of communication. But perhaps, if I'm hearing you, Josh, too, it's like how do we ensure that we have the, the right applicant candidates that also matches with the funding that where Grant is talking about money in that place, right? So, my question that I have is for clarity, as we're talking about economic development and understanding that we have finished cutting ties with nature Wahaala in essence with that position, is our, well, I have two, two questions. The zoning administrator or community development committee, the zoning administrator, what does that, where's that staff member land on what department? That's my first question I have.
Ms. Melendez, the proposed budget eliminates the planning and community development department. So, the planning duties would fall on me.
Okay. Thank you. I need to get clarity on that. The other question I have is as we reimagine economic development, you know, Mayor, under your leadership, we're continuing having conversations with even the opponent Economic Alliance, other entities, resources that are out there that we can see how we can maximize those, continue exploring what this position is going to look like. But my only, I guess, this is my understanding, it's the first reading. And I have to commend and obviously echo a lot of our councilmembers here that have mentioned about the budget. But I also want to commend my councilmember Keith Pace being the chair of the finance committee. And also that after my several experience on council, this has been, I have the budget in front of me virtually, said very, very simple to the, I think you said realistic, practical, right? And I think I definitely want to echo and commend the staff members for putting out the efforts and obviously my chair, councilmember Keith Pace. So, thank you. It has been such a visible structure that I'm seeing that I have not experienced in the past several years that I've been involved. So, with that, I just have more questions, but I'll hold them off. But I just want to show my appreciation for the staff members and obviously our councilmembers and more questions to come. But I, I think in a nutshell is our economic development is, our resources currently within our staff members. So, I would defer to their judgment as we move forward on what we're going to be realistic when we say, are we going to hire an economic development director? What is it exactly that we're going to do, contract out? So, just continuing pondering on that same question. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Mr. Holliday?
I mean, I, I guess I have to see what the, the presentation will be with that. Looking to find somebody that's going to contract or consult. How much money we don't, you know, that, that's, that's unknown. I don't know. That's a, anything's an option.
Yeah, so you're willing to?
I'm, I'm willing to. I'm open minded to anything. Like I said at the very beginning, I'm, I'm still looking for stream of revenue and things to cut and that never stops.
Yes. Yeah. I think we found our stream of revenue.
Mr. Pace?
Thank you. Thank you for those words, Sarai. For some clarity, the economic development side of that, that we, that we took out of the budget has fallen on administration. Failure are both taking on some duties out of that of it. And, and along with some out of the community development department. The, the main focus on this position is PRT and it'll mainly be Parks and Tourism. Our director that's over rec right now, that we're not looking at subsidizing that, that's still a full-time job. We're looking at a director in tourism of the city and that will be a full-time job. And, and it will be somebody that has the background and the education and the skill set to do that job. And as far as grants discussion, I don't want to step out of the row here, but if we had a consultant that come in here and could really build that bridge for that person that we hired, there's money there. We could, we have a fund balance in H-TAX that we could pull a little bit out of there to pay for some consultants that.
I don't think that's a bad idea.
You know, so there's a way to make all that work.
Yeah. Because you still have to have somebody to manage that.
Somebody, somebody has to take the guy's information and proposals and make it happen.
That's a hundred percent right. And the rec director, just to be for clarity too, would have to report to that person. This is the department head in part because rec, you know, particularly with club leagues and stuff like that utilizing parks, parks that we already have. I mean, a lot of this stuff's intertwined.
You can't ask Bree to. You can't ask Bree to run the recreational side of the city and then go up there and promote the tonal.
That's exactly right.
Let, let me, let me add that, this, this is a promising line of discussion, and just to, just to throw a couple of things out there. I'm in favor, I would not be in favor of cutting our funding for our PRT director, I think that's gonna be a strategic position. The economic development side of it, as, as Ms. Myers has mentioned, as Ms. Melendez has mentioned, kind of falls now on staff that already has lots of other things to do, but also we talked about working with the Oconee Economic Alliance, and working with them, however, if the right consultant for economic development came along, that could also help plug into a tourism aspect, uh, that would be able to really amplify the work of our PRT Director or anything else that we decided to do, whatever we do with our new recreations, our new community center, for example. If the right person came along, I think we would be foolish not to give it a good look, and say, okay, here's someone that can help us with the economic development, because all of us wanna see Waha continue to thrive. It's thriving now, we want that to continue, we want this town to continue to blossom, because it is through that blossoming, we gain tax revenue, business license revenue, water revenue, attract people to the park, because they come to Waha and go, wow, it's a really cool place, look, let's go to the park, let's go to Waha, all of this kind of meshes together, and we increase the revenues that we need in order to provide the services to the citizens. So it all works together, so I have, it's a long way to say, I have no objection to exploring your proposal, with those caveats that I mentioned.
Thank you all. And then I have one last.
You know, Sarah E, you were, you were asking.
If she has something else, go for it, go for it, Sarah E.
No, no, Grant, go ahead.
Go for it, man. Okay, good, you know, my, my thing, and I've been talking all along, just nothing new to you, is, is compensating employees. So, one, I think it's a pill that we can make go down easier. If we take that five percent, we said, five percent raise, was it, Celia?
Longevity.
For longevity.
Yes, sir.
And that we apply that to everyone, starting, starting now, that has been there this long, to help keep them here. So for, for example, what it was doing was only those that this year was gonna be the fifth year, that they got the five percent raise. Those who are six years, seven, eight, nine, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, you know, they weren't getting this. But they, they've already crossed their five-year, their ten-year, their fifteen-year, and I think, I think if we could, we could do that, I wanna know, you know, can we do that? Can we come up with that money to compensate those people? Because that's a hard pill to take, they're, they're the ones that have shown great loyalty to this town and its citizens. And let's, let's do what we can, let's, let's bleed a little for them, to, to keep them, we don't wanna lose any people.
Were you calculating that? Yeah, how many people we're talking about?
I'm trying to pull that up for you right now, so I didn't tell you. Um, so. This, this is salary only, this does not include rent, so I'll have to add something to it.
Well, some will be included, two percent under that proposal, because you've got, well, the three percent coal plus the two percent additional, making a total of five percent for those at five years.
And above.
And above.
Approximately eighty-four thousand. I can tell you for certain tomorrow, when I actually run a true report.
Okay. Okay, let's talk about committee, eighty-four thousand, so.
Talk about it and see, see further numbers.
And then, I wanna urge on that, all that money, we renegotiated at fire. Matthew Durham was here, he invited that for us to sit down with him. We go in there, I think, when they understand, let Will present what Will has presented to us, let these men hear this, and let's do that right off the bat. And I think what you're gonna see, is you're gonna see not just enough to pay for that, but to pay for the sours that make a truly cost of living raise, in these past two years we talked about. And I think we need to act on it, he invited it to happen. Thank you for hearing me.
Any more discussion? Anything more on first reading? Motion and a second, no more discussion. All right, all of them?
I'm sorry, that means we've done one more thing here.
You just gotta be like me. Can't let anyone have the last word.
Can we, as part of this budget where it's in here, can we go ahead and allow Ms. Myers to put that property on the market?
We would probably need to call an executive session to discuss the, my, details more.
Okay, we'll do that next meeting. Okay. Nothing further.
All right. Anything else? Okay, all those in favor of accepting the budget on first reading, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote, nay? Okay, so the vote was six to one? Mr. King, did you vote nay? Nay, okay, six to one. All right, next. Discussion and action items for the Oconee Cultivation Project, I'm in agreement with the Community Garden, Ms. Myers?
Yes, sir, this is a renewal request from the Oconee Cultivation Project. They have been maintaining the, um, Community Garden down at the city park, where the pool is at in front of it. The new Executive Director, Ms. Nicole Camp, came in, I met with her, I had heard some concerns as far as maintenance, um, and the, the educational workshops that were promised that we had some issues with. She has assured me that she will be, um, looking for volunteers, but should the volunteers not show, that she will be responsible for making sure that the maintenance is done. Also, if we could give some additional opportunities, partnering with the city in any way, shape or form, with those workshops, with any other community days, possibly even helping with some of our downtown areas, if we'd like to pursue that in the future. But for this particular one, they are requesting that they continue their community garden in front of the city pool at one oh one North Maple Street. Uh, they will maintain the garden ten-foot perimeter, the raised beds. They will provide educational information out there, so that as the, the plantings are going through their life cycle, and maybe there's a time that is not as free as another time, there is an explanation of why it may look like this, or actually having some schoolchildren, some boys out school, so they can swing out and being able to, to be a partner. They understand that it is prominent, it is something that drivers by sea, so they are going to take greater steps to make sure that it is an enhancement on local property. And anything that we have concern wise, we're welcome to reach out to her during the growing season, and they will go and address it. On our part, we're allowing them to use the, the location itself, and we are providing the water. Her letter is in the box.
Yeah, I think it's great.
I'll make a motion too.
Yeah.
Or in my way, I'm sorry.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, we got two seconds, it's a popular second. Okay, um, any discussion on that? Only question I've got is what do we do if they don't, if we're concerned about where the gardens are being kept, in the constitution?
We have a new bank, though.
What recourse do we have?
Um, should it not be maintained after we, we reach out, then yes, we can take it back over and continue to move forward.
May I add something to that, Mayor, I had the same thought, may I add something?
Of course.
Perhaps we can include something that there's an expectation for us to get, maybe quarterly updates, maybe for them to present something, you know, some type of engagement that allows, first of all, the use of the public space, as we know, it's already available to the public, but also putting accountability back. So one of my things that I would suggest, Ms. Myers or any here, is maybe consider like asking, as they before, we know harvesting, you know, seasonal, people grow different things depending on our season as well, but perhaps, um, an expectation that when the season's over, understanding like, we have some maybe semi-yearly updates on them, on how it's going and everything, especially that the partnership is both reciprocated. What are your thoughts on that?
I can certainly ask for updates, um, or any type of report that council would like to receive. Um, I can ask, or should Ms. Camplet mind even coming in?